Good evening, I'd like to call the September 26th, 2016 legislative session to order. I would like to welcome everyone. If you would please silence your cellphones or any other electronic devices you have. Should you need to take a phone call, please exit the room to do so. If there is an emergency during the meeting, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn, go down the stairs. If that exit for some reason is blocked, please make a left and then a right and proceed down the stairs. And if you need assistance, please tell us and we will get you assistance. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Jay Hurley of Grace United Methodist Church for our invocation.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for the honor and the privilege of holding you all in prayer. And let you know that down through the years throughout Salisbury, there's always been prayer meetings and intercessors that hold this meeting in prayer. So with that in mind, let's pray. Father, we're so privileged and honored to be here tonight. And Father, especially when Scripture commands us to pray for those in authority. So Lord, we pray for the men and women who sit in these seats for the city of Salisbury, knowing that you have placed them there through your Holy Spirit. Father, we pray that throughout this meeting that you would grant wisdom and knowledge and discernment in making the decisions that all these city councilmen will make for the common good of all the citizens of Salisbury. Father, we pray for Mayor Day, Ms. Heath, Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtonton. And especially for Ms. Laura Mitchell and her family as they transition to Rockville, Maryland. We pray, Lord, that you would hide each one of us under the shadow of your wings, that you would protect us, grant us your favor, let us bask in the love of God that was made known to us through your Son, Christ. And Father, we're forever in your debt. We give you thanks and praise in the special name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor, appreciate it. Please rise now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have a presentation from one of our community organizations, Epoch Dream Center, and Joanne Blackman is going to let us know all about it. Welcome, Joanne.
Thank you all so much for inviting us to come and talk tonight. I need to get myself together. I did bring brochures for the council if you'd like to pass them along. I'm sorry. Take multiple, yeah, take several, hand them to your friends. Okay, my name is Joanne Blackman. I am the Director of the Epoch Dream Center in Hebron, Maryland. And this is our fourth year open, serving the children of the Hebron School District. Excuse me, we exist to mentor, nurture, and equip children in the areas of academics, character development, and emotional wellness in the Hebron area. We serve children from Westside Primary School, Westside Intermediate School, Mardella High, Mardella Middle School, and Salisbury Middle School. So we serve children from the ages of first grade through seventh, and next year we will continue into eighth grade and possibly down into kindergarten. So in four years, we have really expanded to serve all of elementary and will be in through all of middle school next year. All of our students are living below the poverty level in Hebron, which most people don't realize is quite as dramatic as it is. Most of Westside Primary School and Westside Intermediate School alone have almost a 50% rate of children that are on the free and reduced meal plan, which puts them living below the poverty level. And that's a large number for such a small town. So in the evenings in Hebron, you can often see children, children, not necessarily older teenagers, but young children roaming the streets of Hebron. They're out, they're congregating places, they're often causing problems in the town. The people of Hebron are tired of it. There's crime happening, there's drugs, there's a lot going on. And we exist to try to come at that preventatively from a younger age so that when we take a lot of these kids into our program, that they get a feeling and a sense of belonging to a group and to a family so that when they are 14 and 15 and 16, that they're not the ones that are roaming the streets of Hebron and causing a problem. So that's why we're doing what we're doing. As statistics do show that the majority of crime, experimentation with drugs, experimentation with sexual activity happens in the United States between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00 PM because so often, children are going home unsupervised with parents working or who knows what's going on, just un-involvement of parents even sometimes. And so we are set up and hoping to kind of bridge that gap of those hours in our town. The students that come to us are referred to us by the teachers in each of the schools, specifically teachers, sometimes even guidance counselors, because teachers, you know, on a day-to-day basis, they see these kids and they know them. So then, we do not get all the children that are on farm, free and reduced meals, because they don't all have that lack outside of just being on free and reduced meals. But we have teachers tell us, who actually is hungry? So who is eating breakfast and lunch because it's free? And then who might not be eating again until breakfast the next day? And they're recommending those students to us. Who is going home alone? Who have parents that are incarcerated or that are just missing or that are living with grandparents or that are really not getting the nurture and the love and the attention that they need? And who has that need? And the teachers really do know that information. They really are in tune with their kids and they're making us the recommendations of each of our students. We have also had several people, like neighbors, come to us and say, is there any way you take these neighbor kids? We see them out all night long, can you grab them up? And so we'll also take them as well. So that's how we do our process. But I just thought I'd give you a quick understanding of what our evening looks like. So the students come to us straight after school. We pick up middle schoolers because there's no transportation for them. So at 3:00, we pick up our middle school kids, and then at 4:00, our intermediate school kids and our primary school children are dropped to us by the bus with all of my staff, all of the teachers and the volunteers and even sometimes mentors waiting for them at the bus stop. Excited to see them home from school, exactly what I would do for my children when they arrive home from school. Excited to see them, excited to find out about how their day was. Did they honor their teachers? Was anybody in trouble? Did anybody, everybody do what was expected of them? And we're excited to see them. And they know that we are interested and looking forward to seeing them each day. And for a lot of our students, we might be the only people every day that are really, really looking forward to seeing them. So I think that that really speaks volumes to them. And as soon as they come in, every day, we say what we call the Epoch Mantra, which we based around our Epoch Code. And so for four years, we have lived by and governed the students by the Epoch Code, which is to respect authority, love everyone, forgive quickly, and work hard. And these are things that the students agree to daily. These are things we talk about doing every day. These are things that we instill in them and believe that if they can really grasp and really buy into, that that can take them as far as they could ever possibly go in life, those four principles of living the life of a person with integrity. And so we made what we call our Epoch Mantra out of those four principles. And I thought I would read it to you so that you know what our belief system is and what our students are hearing and saying about themselves every day. So when they come in, the first thing they do is they go into the gym as one large group, all the middle schoolers, all the elementary schoolers. And we have a leader. And it's a echo-type thing. So the leader says it, they echo it, the leader says it. And the excitement that comes with this is really, really good, which I'm really excited that the mayor's coming out tomorrow and I hope you'll be there in time to see the mantra because it is touching. This is what the students say about themselves every day. "Today is a good day. I thank God for waking me up today. I go to school so I can learn, graduate, get a job, and be the leader that God has created me to be. Every day I will be educated and empowered by my teachers with the tools to be successful within my community and throughout the country. I apply myself daily. I study, I ask questions when I don't understand. When I am confronted with a problem or a conflict, I think before I react. I ignore all negative influences in the classroom and throughout the day. I am extremely proud to be the next generation of leaders with integrity. I work hard, I respect authority, I love everyone, I forgive quickly, I accept responsibility, and I love the challenge." And usually that comes with a good bit of yelling and cheering and at the end, they're just super excited. And I think that we can see a difference in the year and a half that we've been working on the mantra with them buying into those words and us being able to say to them, did you work hard today? Did you respect authority today? Were you a person of integrity today? And they're starting to think that about themselves. And that might be some of the best words that anyone's ever spoken over them. And not only are we speaking that over them, but they're saying it about themselves every single day. And we think that's a big deal. So after the mantra, we go in and have a snack because all kids need a snack after school so they can focus. And throughout the night, we do homework. We help them with homework. They break out in the classrooms according to their ages and grades. We do some sort of a sit-down, decompress from the daytime, tell me about your day, what was the high of your day, what was the low of your day? We might do a character lesson about different character traits, friendship, things like that. We do a gym game of some sort, get some energy out. And then perhaps the highlight outside of the mantra of our night, every night, is we do have a sit-down, family-style dinner. I cook dinner for 70-plus people every night. And we serve dinner at the table. It's not walk-through-the-line style. And the difference between going to school and getting free breakfast and then going and get free lunch and now coming to get free dinner and everything's free, 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 the difference is they're part of a group and they are working hard. They're doing what my children do at our home for dinner because their dinner's free also. But they participate in family and they do their chores and they're part of our family and that's what comes when you're part of something. So our students do work hard and they do do their chores every night and they put 100% effort into their homework. And then we set the table together and fix dinner together. And we sit down, any adult that's in the building and all the students, sit down together, mixed adults with children. We have family conversation, family dinner, and the children are learning the back and forth of conversation and how to hold it with an adult. And so that's a big deal at the end of the night for us. We also try to have each of our students paired with a mentor of similar personalities or interests. We have same-sex mentors, so we always have men with boys and women with girls. And that's also a tremendous thing to offer to these students. And the mentors commit to a year. They come out for an entire year, every single week. They come to our program, they might stop in school and have lunch, they might go to the chorus concert at school. But these kids have someone that shows up for them every single week that's not there for the group, that's just there for them. And that means, it makes a world of difference to them in their lives. And we believe firmly in mentors. And so outside of the staff that teaches every night, we have mentors that come every week and we have an enormous group of volunteers that come throughout the week and for the entire year that make our program run every night. Right now, I'm not there running the program, it is running. There's a group having dinner right now, dinner's already on the table, there's a birthday celebration happening, we have a group from UMS out there. I mean, there's just, there's a lot of parts moving at once and it's all to make up a program that I'm super proud of. So thank you for letting me tell you about it. I'm happy to, I don't know if we do questions or not, but I appreciate the opportunity to come out.
Joanne, I just want to say and let everybody know that I had the privilege of spending an afternoon about a year ago, I guess it is now. You've got to see it. If you get the opportunity, you have to go. To see these young boys and girls getting off the bus and running, literally from the top step, running to their mentors and to the people who are greeting them and hug them and not let go. And to watch the process in the gym, which was, you just have to get, you get caught up in it, it's fantastic. The number of hours that these folks put in and the effort, I mean, everybody knows what it takes to make a dinner for four or five every day. Can you imagine doing it for 70? So God bless you, thank you for what you do. I wish there were 100 of you.
Thank you for having us out.
I would also like to say thanks for your dedication because that's what it takes to deal with children, period. And you have to have that compassion. And I really appreciate it because that's maybe 60 or 70 children that are not getting into trouble and are being properly cared for.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's the way we should start off the meeting. It's really good.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we have a proclamation.
I do. Well, Mr. President, members of the council, first of all, that was a fantastic way to start a meeting. Incredible. And I'm excited to go see it. I'm sad that I haven't been out there to see it yet, but I'm excited tomorrow to go see the magic I keep hearing about at Epoch Dream Center in Hebron. I also want to acknowledge, we've got the county executive and county administrator in the room. Gentlemen, thank you for being here with us today. So the proclamation that I'm about to read is a little bit early. But the reason that I'm reading it, the reason that we're doing it a little bit early is to get people to come out and participate in the event that we're going to be talking about. So I'm going to read the proclamation, then I'll talk to you about the event. So whereas Governor Hogan declared October 5th is Walk Maryland Day and has encouraged citizens of all ages to take to the streets, trails, and parks around the state to enjoy the benefits of Maryland's official state exercise, walking. Learned that today. And whereas Walk Maryland Day was declared just months after U.S. Surgeon General Murthy issued his call to action to promote walking in walkable communities initiative as a way to increase walking across the United States by calling for improved access to safe and convenient places to walk and wheelchair roll and by creating a culture that supports these activities for people of all ages and abilities. And whereas walking is an exercise that is suitable for nearly everyone, it is low-cost, convenient, and safe and has many health benefits. And whereas research shows that walking just 30 minutes per day may help in maintaining a healthy weight, reducing the risk of diabetes and heart disease, improving blood pressure and blood sugar, and enhancing mental well-being. And whereas Salisbury, Maryland recognizes that declaring a local walking initiative will provide an opportunity for citizens of all ages to connect with their neighbors as they take to the streets, trails, and parks around the city of Salisbury to enjoy the benefits of walking. Now therefore, I Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, to hereby proclaim October 5th, 2016, as I mentioned, it's a little early, as Walk Salisbury Day in our city, encourage all citizens to support each other as they take their first steps toward healthier lifestyle. So let's walk Salisbury. Now, the reason I'm talking about it tonight is to let you know about October 5th. 1:00 PM, Wednesday, October 5th, we're going to meet at Beaver Dam Bridge in the city park and we're going to walk for a mile. We can all walk for a mile. So one mile, we're going to have prizes to incentivize you to walk. We'll have a drawing at each quarter-mile marker. So go on and walk with us and there'll be a drawing at every quarter-mile. Delegate Anderton, you can walk a mile, right? There are prizes. Come on in. There are prizes. Delegate Sample Hughes, you can walk a mile. Wednesday, October 5th, 1:00 PM, starting at the Beaver Dam Bridge in city park. And every quarter-mile, there will be a drawing. We'll also have some healthy snacks and some water provided. So if you can come out, it should take less than an hour, we're just going to walk together. It'll definitely take less than an hour, right, Mr. Heath?
Should be 17 to 20.
Should be 17 to 20 minutes. We're not all Tom Stevenson, we're not all in that kind of shape. But for the rest of us, it'll take 30 minutes or so. I'm going to be stopping for prizes, I don't know about you. So please come out, please join us. Also, the Wycomico County Health Department is going to be doing a walk that day, I believe, around downtown Salisbury, around the route that they've set up around downtown. Is that right, Mr. Executive?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll finish that and come back.
Two miles. All right, okay. All right, you heard it here first, folks, county executive will be walking two miles. So please come join us, you know, we want to promote a healthy, walkable Salisbury, Wycomico County, and state of Maryland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, Ms. Mitchell, could you join me?
Do I have to?
Yes.
It is warming up a little bit in here.
Now you're warm.
No, no. It's the lights.
I'm going to read this for obvious reasons.
You memorize it?
Let me read this. Laura Mitchell has served on the Salisbury City Council since April 2011. And in 2015, became the first Salisbury City Council Representative for District 5. She has served as Vice President of the City Council since April 2013. Additionally, Mrs. Mitchell has served on the following. She's Treasurer of the Executive Board at Maryland Municipal League, Treasurer and past President of Eastern Shore Association of Municipalities, Council Representative at Tri-County Council, Commissioner on the Salisbury Zoo Commission, Commissioner on the Wycomico County Airport Commission, several, more than several MML Committees, Convention Planning Communications Legislative Committee, yah, yah, yah. Mrs. Mitchell has worked tirelessly to bring public awareness to substance addiction and the programs that help with counseling and rehabilitation. Her efforts brought BMX racing pro Tony Hoffman to Salisbury to speak at the county high schools and Salisbury University about his experience as an addict. She's also been my right-hand man and kept me out of trouble, which is a very difficult task. Laura, we want to thank you for your service. And I'd like to read the inscription on the plaque. Presented to Laura Mitchell in recognition and appreciation for your years of service and dedication to the community and the city of Salisbury as Member and Vice President of the City Council, April 2011 through September 2016. Thank you. I can't tell you what you just said in my ear. Can we get a picture with the mayor and council? Can we do it over?
Do we do it over here?
Let's do it over here.
Can we slide?
Can we slide?
It's a good thing I'm here.
Boda votes.
Other duties assigned.
Lord, Lord. Oh, Jen.
Can we do that? No, you, I don't.
I'll talk to the kids in the back.
Well, that means I'm just going to be in the front because I'm short.
We got a couple here. I know I can zoom in, but it's easier to walk in. Okay. Couple more. Oh, my phone looks much better than yours, Mr. Mayor.
No bunny ears.
I'm not going to tell you what they're doing.
I can imagine.
Okay, great.
We got one more about over here.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can we do a picture of all of them?
So I'm going to be real brief. Don't go.
Too late.
I got to tell you what just happened. Former Mayor Councilman Irtonton said, "We got to get her a picture of the last picture we took as council."
And by magic?
I, you know, don't mean to ruin the surprise, but you know, you called it.
That was quick.
I'm never playing cards with you. Laura, we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you.
I'm going to miss all of you as well.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you for all your service, thank you for everything you've done, and this community's
And we're not done yet. I think, oh, she said something again that I can't say. Delegate Sample Hughes and Delegate Irtonton.
Anderton.
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 Sorry.
Chuck again on that one, brother.
Predictions.
So put it down.
I was trying to speak things into existence today, aren't we? Good evening, members of the county council. Excuse, whoa.
There you go.
Wow.
Trying to speak things into existence.
County Council, sorry. City councils and mayor. Certainly this evening, it was an honor for myself and Delegate Irtonton to be here to represent the great state of Maryland, the Maryland General Assembly. And it was moving to hear all of the great things that you have done, Laura. But it's also even more moving to know and to feel the change that you have made. And I'm saying that for many, many reasons. But as you are aware, just in this last recent session that we had in Annapolis, you were standing by my side, trying to give me the strength to get past legislation as it dealt with substance use disorders. And I just want personally, again, say thank you for that because you have been a leader and are a leader and continue to be a leader throughout the state of Maryland. And many people might not know the times that you've been up and down the highway just to get that message across. And so it's very, very important and I hope that many people can continue to see that and, you know, where you're moving to and beyond because we want to let you know that it's very, very genuine and the fact that I do appreciate it. And there was a quote from Mahatma Gandhi of Muhammad, and it states that, "You be the change that you want to see in this world." And you are and have been and will continue to be that change. So I just want to say thank you for that. And right before we read the citation, I wanted to let Delegate Irtonton say a word or two.
Real quick, I got to know Laura through the Board of Directors with the Maryland Municipal League, and we served on the board together. And she was District Vice President after me when I went on to become President of MML. And anybody who's seen me run a meeting, it's a pretty laid-back meeting and it kind of goes off in a bunch of different directions, but not with Laura there. You know, I mean, she'll be sitting right around the corner and she's, you know, pointing to the agenda, you know, and making sure that we're getting the point across and we're staying on track. And she's taken on some big challenges, you know, with the Eastern Shore Association, municipalities, and other groups of kind of cleaning things up. And, you know, we experienced a bit of, I guess you would call it a generational shift, I guess, in some of our municipal organizations. And so, you know, she's really righted the ships and as long as, you know, everybody adheres to what she put in place, you know, those organizations should be good to go. And if they don't adhere to what she put in place, well, I don't know what's going to happen, but we'll figure something out. They will figure something out, whoever, whoever it may be. So I just want to thank you for the due diligence that you put into everything that you undertake. And it definitely means a lot to the rest of us, you know. And, you know, those organizations and these folks here, these folks here, we're all going to miss somebody with that attention to detail. So come on up, hang out with us for a minute.
Oh, I'm much closer now. I have your number and I know where your office is.
Come on, no, now.
Now.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Oh, you can come down, you can hang out there too.
He's going to think I was laughing here and wait him up close and personal.
Oh, I can't wait.
Have some legislation in mind.
Oh, fabulous, she's going to keep you busy. We have a citation and reiterates thus, Maryland House of Delegates, official citation, be hereby known to all that the sincerest congratulations are offered to Laura Mitchell in recognition of your service as a Councilwoman of Salisbury, April 2011 to September 2016. We join the citizens of the city of Salisbury in offering our sincerest gratitude for your dedication to public service and assigned by myself, Delegate Sheree Sample Hughes, and Delegate Carl Anderton, both representing Wycomico County. Wycomico County. And you're my constituent. I'm going to lose voters.
All right, sit in there like you love each other.
Thank you.
Thank you, delegates. Appreciate it very much. I want to entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Irtin?
Second.
Ms. Mitchell?
If I could make a motion to amend the agenda by switching the order of the first and second scheduled public hearings so that the updates to the city comprehensive plan will precede the PennTex Daggersborough Road annexation.
All right, we have a motion to amend.
Second.
And there's a second. Mr. Boda made the motion. And who made the second?
I did.
Ms. Mitchell made the second. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll now call the motion on the approval of legislative agenda as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Ms. Laura. How are you?
I'm good. How are you this evening?
Very good, thank you.
If I may, with your permission, before I read the consent agenda, I did want to recognize retired City Clerk Brenda Colgrove is with us this evening. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the September 12, 2016 council meeting minutes. Resolution Number 2659, approving the reappointment of Chris Roberts to the Parks and Recreation Committee for term ending September 2019. Resolution Number 2660, approving the reappointment of David A. Plots to the Parks and Recreation Committee for term ending October 2019. Resolution Number 2661, approving the appointment of Amy Kraus to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending September 2019. Resolution Number 2662, approving the appointment of Barbara Bell to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending September 2019. Resolution 2663, authorizing the waiver of the building permit fee tied to the first $3,000 in construction costs associated with a construction or replacement of residential ramps for individuals with physical disabilities who have limited mobility and require wheelchair assistance to have access to residences. Resolution Number 2664, declaring that Edit LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 100 North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland. Resolution Number 2665, supporting the development of Lot 30 with affordable housing and a public market to be known as Gatehouse Market and Lofts. That concludes the consent agenda this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Colgrove. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. I want to entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Irtin. Good evening, Mrs.
Good evening. The only item this evening is the award of bid for RFP 1616. That's the Automated Speed Enforcement System. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to solicit proposals for RFP 1616 Automated Speed Enforcement System. Procurement Department issued the solicitation on May 5, then withdrew the solicitation on May 12 upon notice of an opportunity to piggyback on a Calvert County contract for said services. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: It's when contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. On April 1, 2016, Calvert County exec-- excuse me, executed a contract with Breckford Corporation for bid number PERCH 2016-15 for Automated Speed Enforcement System. The Procurement Division has obtained a copy of the contract, which was competitively bid through the Calvert County Department of Finance and Budget Purchasing Office, and has confirmed that the price and terms contracted to Calvert County will be afforded to the City of Salisbury as well. By piggybacking on this contract, the City of Salisbury will save $190,800 per year as compared to our current monthly rate per unit. Additional pertinent details regarding unit pricing and length of contract are noted in the attached letter from Major Scott Kolb of the Salisbury Police Department. The Procurement Department requests council's approval to award contract RFP 1616 to Breckford Corporation in the amount of $223,200. The monthly payment amount of $18,600 will be paid from the general fund revenue account noted in your packet set up for revenue from the Speed Enforcement System.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I just thank Ms. Miller for finding a way to save the city of Salisbury almost $200,000 over the next year, getting the same service from the same company?
I think that's...
I was just about to say the same thing. Thank you.
Well deserved.
And thank Major Scott Kolb as well.
And Major Kolb.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You had a question, Mr. Irtin?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Okay. See where we are.
Resolution.
Oh, before I forget, if Chris Roberts, David Plots, Amy Kraus, or Barbara Bell are here, please stand. New? Okay, move on to congratulate them and thank them.
Thank you.
Have that note. Motion to approve Resolution Number 266 is in order.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you. We've provided an amended version of Resolution 2666. I believe council was provided that by Diane prior to the start of the meeting. Resolution 2666 will have the effect of formally accepting conveyance of Riverview Commons Riverwalk property. City of Salisbury included funds in the FYO8 bond issuance for Mill Street Bridge repair, and the project included replacement of the bulkhead along that portion of the Wycomico River, referred generally to the old Feldman's property. The former Feldman's property was acquired by Riverview Commons LLC with the understanding that the property owner would provide construction access to the city to enable the bulkhead replacement at a cost savings to the public. The developers designed and constructed at no expense to the public a walkway access from Mill Street to the river and a riverwalk along the length of property consistent with the adopted city standards. The owners have offered to donate the property to the City of Salisbury in a fee simple contract along with said improvements. The parcel of land along Mill Street in the east branch of the Wycomico River contains approximately 2,179 square feet of Riverwalk improvement as shown in parcel A in your packet. The subsequent subdivision of the plat and illegal description with council's approval and the Department of Planning and Zoning has found that there is an error contained in the plat of the legal description. A revised plat is being submitted, at which time a revised legal description will be prepared. If the city chooses to accept this property tonight, those corrections will be made, and the, those legal description corrections will be made, and that property will become the, will become property of the City of Salisbury.
If I could make a motion to amend Resolution 2666 by adopting revisions presented, subject to the approval of the corrected plat and legal description by the city solicitor.
We have a motion to amend.
Second. So moved.
Mr. Irtin?
What he said.
Made the motion?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Mitchell made a second. Okay, we're good.
Should we read what's being changed or should we just apply the amendment?
It's the plat description.
Will you?
Do you have that, Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, we have it in our...
If you take a look at, we have a diagram in there, you see that the, if you, the way it's presented in my book, anyway, if it's sideways like this, at the very bottom of the property, there's a little triangle there that would put a barrier between the city's current property and the property that's being donated, and that's going to be closed, basically. So the property will come to the city property law.
Okay.
That's the plan.
All right, we have a vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Then chair votes aye. And now we'll vote on the, call the motion. Resolution Number 2666. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2667.
So moved.
Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Irtin. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you. Resolution 2667 is a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to authorize a memorandum of understanding and an acceptance of donation from the Delmar Zoological Society for improvements to the Salisbury Zoological Park Visitor Center Building. The council of the City of Salisbury supports the acceptance of the donation, as does the Salisbury Zoo. At the Salisbury Zoo location, Delmar Zoological Society has raised funds for the design, improvement, and construction of the existing visitor center. The DZS, can we do that? The DZS would like to donate the improvements to the visitor center to the City of Salisbury upon final acceptance of construction. The city will provide in-kind labor for specific tasks, but will not provide any direct funding. The attached memorandum of understanding defines the responsibility of each party with regard to the donation. If this resolution is passed, it will authorize the mayor to sign the MOU.
Questions on the resolution?
On the memorandum of understanding line 18, this may just be editorial, if it is, then it's time with me. It just says, whereas the city also provides financial support to the Salisbury Zoo, I thought it would be a little bit more clear that the city owns the Salisbury Zoo. But if it's not necessary from a legal standpoint, that's okay as well. Mr. Tillman's looking at the map.
Yeah.
Of Feldman's.
He's on it.
He's on it.
Recommendation, Mr. Tillman?
Legally, I don't think it matters.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2667, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you.
I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2668.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Stevenson?
It is the Tom Stevenson Show tonight, by the way. Usually, it's Mark up here doing all the reading. 2668, Close Quarters Defense wishes to donate a five-day training course entitled CDQ Level One. CDQ Level One Training is designed for law enforcement personnel where the officer will learn about weapon and zone control and personnel control. CQD Level One Training and Instruction will include an in-depth study of strategy and tactics with a special focus on officer justified use of force actions against low, medium, and high-threat adversaries. CQD is donating the course so that six members of the Salisbury Police Department will be able to attend and train free of charge for the duration of the five-day course. The normal tuition is $7,500. However, again, CQD wishes to donate the course to the Salisbury Police Department. The chief is here, I believe, if the council has any questions with regard to the training or the donation.
Mr. Council President, I was just going to ask if it's okay with the mayor, if the chief could explain to us sort of what the, what the outcomes and indicators are and how we might find out how well they did and whether or not it's worth spending even more money to send more officers to the training.
It's okay with me. And if it's all right with you...
With you.
Yeah, I'm saying it's okay with me. And if it's all right with you, what I'd also start with is just, I've been through the training.
Officer, can we take it?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they'll provide the one-day, you know, access to the one-day. And you'll leave exhausted.
Ooh.
It's physically demanding. But the one thing that I can say you'll take away is a real respect for what our law enforcement officers go through, and I think also a real respect for the humanity of the situation that requires any sort of engagement. And it's really about deciding, you know, what not to do as much as it is what to do in a situation. And, you know, I found it to be a workout physically, but also really kind of a positive emotional experience. But Chief, if you have anything you want to add, feel free. Come on up.
Actually, I don't have anything more to add than your personal experience. I have not gone through the training myself, although I have observed it. I've had occasion to observe it and speak to some of the individuals who have gone through it and who provide the training. And if there's a particular question, I think that...
I want to respond to the one.
Well, no, it's just what the matrix was. So if it was worth it for, if it is worth it for the officers as much, as much as it was for Mayor Day, is this something that we should put in a line, you know, as, I can't believe this, as budget season is now, you can see that time coming, whether or not we should send more officers through it?
Well, potentially, we'd have to evaluate that and, you know, weigh it against what we're doing currently in the academy. Right now, though, I can tell you that we're appreciative of the offer, which would include the training for several members of the agency. And it would have to be something that we'd look at.
So, one more question. The $7,500 that's noted here, is that for all six, or is that per person?
It's for all six.
All six, okay.
I think some of the analysis will have to be anecdotal and seeing what the officers think and whether or not they find value in it.
These are, that's correct. I mean, they've received numerous types of training over the years, so this would be the opportunity to evaluate that process.
If we could ask the clerk to, because I'm not going to remember in March when we start to do this, if we could revisit this particular line to see, to follow up with the mayor and the chief to see if it's something else we want to fund, that'd be great. Can you, I know you can remember that because it's written down, and the former clerk will remember, and she's not even going to be here.
She's taking notes right now.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
Can't get it out.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Any other questions? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2668, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, we'll now hold a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing for Resolution Number 2669. Anybody wishing to speak regarding this resolution, please stand and be sworn in by the Assistant City Clerk. All right, I will, then, if there's no comments, I will close the hearing, and I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2669.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Irtin, Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you. I believe the council also received an amended version of 2669. We had to strike the end of that heading there. It was, it said dated May 2012, so we got that out of there. I think we're, somebody's trying desperately to make things confusing for me tonight, so... I think we're, somebody's trying desperately to make things confusing for me tonight, so. Resolution of City of Salisbury to amend in 2010 City of Salisbury Comprehensive Plan, the Land Use Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland delegates planning and land use authority to certain local governments in the state of Maryland, including the City of Salisbury, to guide in the future growth and development of the town. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the Land Use Article, subsection 3-204 lowercase c, numeral two, of the Maryland Annotated Code, the following two corrective actions have occurred to the adopted 2010 City of Salisbury Comprehensive Plan. One, four parcels totaling approximately 5.081 acres of land situated on the Parsons Elec, Election District should be added, and they should be changed from low density residential to commercial. The second change is 22 parcels totaling 55.47 acres of land situated in the Parson, also situated in the Parsons Elec, Election District. The Salisbury Planning Commission conducted an advertised public hearing on July 20, 2016, to hear from opponents or proponents of the proposed amendments, at which time no public comments were received, and the Salisbury Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the mayor and city council. The Salisbury City Council held an advertised public hearing, that would be tonight, on September 26, to hear the same from those who either supported or were in opposition to this change. If the city chooses to approve this resolution tonight, the two aforementioned changes will occur to the city's comprehensive plan.
Questions?
I'd like to make a motion to amend Resolution 2669 by striking dated May 2012 from the title of the resolution.
And the comma.
Yep.
And the comma.
And the comma.
And the comma.
And the comma.
All right, we have a motion for an amendment.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Mitchell. We'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Any other questions? I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2669, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. I will now open a public hearing for Resolution Number 2650 and 2651.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Ierton.
Excuse me, Mr.?
Oh, yes. Any, any public comments for the hearing? Hearing none? I'll close the public hearing. Now we can vote on 265. Mr. Stevenson.
We're going to keep things interesting here this evening, so Mr. Tillman shared with me when he came into the room, just a couple of changes to the meets and bounds. So I'm going to pass those to my left, to the mayor, if he would please, and pass those along to council. Mr. Tillman, do you want to elaborate on the changes at all? Do you think it's necessary?
Yeah, these are all the changes that somehow just didn't end up in the book. These were made some time ago. But specifically in two, three, four, five, I think in the fifth line, it refers to a brass cap, and it should be a brass disc, which I think is reflected in newer version. And also, the word barracks was spelled incorrectly the second time it was used, and that's about one, two, three, four, five. The sixth line is lining up from the bottom, and I think that's it. But the new version that you have is, it should be matched. There, I mean, long before you got it, there had been changes to the resolutions as well, and those are reflected in your materials, but just not the correct description.
Does that need a motion to change, or is that editorial?
No, I mean, you're passing it now. I think, I think we're just, as long as we are substituting that for the material that had been sent out in the advertisement, I guess we should move the substitute correct.
It's a substitute.
Actually, the correct one may have gone out in the advertisement. That I'm not sure of, but this is, the one in the book is not correct.
If the one that was in the advertisement is correct, can we do this? If it's incorrect, the one that was advertised?
Yeah, these are pretty minor changes, but this description is actually going to the state, and it's going to be reflected in the boundaries of the City of Salisbury, and I think that we're just making sure that the references are correct. I mean, even if you look at these, we could have lived with a misspelled word, possibly, a reference to a cap instead of a disc, but we wanted to match the, the plat of the annexed property.
So the inclusion of this exhibit then makes the entire document correct?
Yes.
Motion to substitute the newly provided Exhibit A for the previously published version of Exhibit A in our agenda packet.
Second. Motion by Ms. Mitchell, second by Mr. Ierton. Is it you, or? It was you. Sorry. Make, change it to Mr. Boda. Second. Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment to replace Exhibit A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you for doing that, because I don't want somebody trying to track me down in 25 years, talking, asking me about whether or not it was supposed to be a cap or a plaque or...
I'd like to try to find me in 25 years.
Whatever it was supposed to be. I'm just trying to lighten things up a little bit, so. The two resolutions that you have before you now are relative to the proposed annexation to property in the City of Salisbury contiguous to and binding upon the northerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury, and shall be known as the Penn Tacs Daggsborough Road Annexation. The application and zoning classification to the same area located on the northerly side and binding upon Daggsborough Road and northeast quadrant of the intersection of North Salisbury Boulevard, Maryland Route 13, and Daggsborough Road. City of Salisbury received a petition for annexation dated March 31, 2016. Certification of the petition and signatures was approved or authenticated by the Public Works Department. These two resolutions in effect will have, they did two things. One was to set the date for the public hearing, which we've accomplished this evening, and to accept the terms and conditions of the annexation agreement. I can drill down on this a little bit if you like, but we've been rounding around on this annexation, so.
Any questions from the council?
Mr. President, when you had the original motion for this, did it include both resolutions?
Yes.
Okay. And are you going to vote then on both of them together after the ones amended?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all right, Mr. Tillman?
Yes, although actually, the exhibit is, applies to both of the resolutions as well. We didn't just amend one, they were, that's being substituted both.
Any other questions? All right, if not, hearing none, we'll vote on the resolution. All those resolutions, all those in favor of Resolution Number 2650 and 2651, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2670.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Jackson.
You know why we did all of that, right? That was just so councilwoman Mitchell couldn't leave us, making all those changes and improvements. Yeah.
I can still proofread for you if you'd like.
Wasn't going to be a, wasn't going to be a 20-minute meeting tonight, so. Okay, thank you. 2670, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland authorizing an application to the Maryland Department of Commerce to expand the boundaries of the existing Salisbury-Waikamiko Enterprise Zone. The council of the City of Salisbury is interested in promoting the economic development and our, of our community by attracting new businesses and developments to the area and encouraging the expansion of existing businesses. The Maryland Department of Commerce has assisted the city in this endeavor by allowing the establishment of the Salisbury-Waikamiko Enterprise Zone, thereby, thereby providing tax credit incentives to qualifying businesses located within the zone. The council of the City of Salisbury wishes to expand the boundaries as indicated in the enclosed map, in order to improve the economic development potential of the airport and the surrounding area. Should the city choose to support or approve this resolution tonight, the enterprise zone would be expanded to improve that area, as shown on the vicinity map as part of your packet. I don't have a slide or anything to share with you, but this was discussed at work session, so. That's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I get you to open the public hearing before we take the final vote on that, too?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, I'll now open the public hearing for Resolution Number 2670. Anyone who'd like to speak, please stand and be sworn in. Hearing none, I'll close the public meeting, public hearing, and we'll now vote on Resolution Number 2670. All those in favor of 2670, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2401 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, creating a bike route which will run along West Isabella Street from the intersection at US Route 50 to the intersection at Delaware Avenue, whereas the City of Salisbury desires to encourage cycling throughout the city, and whereas the proposed bicycle route will be in both directions along West Isabella Street from the intersection of West Isabella Street and Route 50 to the intersection of West Isabella Street and Delaware Avenue, and whereas in order to define the dedicated bicycle lane, appropriate lane stripings and lane markings will be provided on the pavement, and whereas in order to provide bicycle route portions of the road must be marked as shared between motorized vehicle traffic and bicycle traffic, and whereas in order to define portions of the roadway that are to be available for usage by bicycles, appropriate shared markings will be installed on the pavement, and whereas in order to clearly define the route, appropriate signage will be installed, and whereas the curb-to-curb street width and parking on affected streets will be unchanged and by the proposed, unchanged by the proposed bicycle route, and whereas the Director of Public Works has determined that the impact of the proposed bicycle route on vehicular traffic flow will be minimal, now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that a bicycle route be created in both directions along West Isabella Street from the intersection of Route 50 to the intersection at Delaware Avenue, and that bicycles be permitted to travel this route in both dedicated and shared lanes, and be it further enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage. This ordinance was introduced and read in a meeting of the city council, the City of Salisbury, held this evening, and thereafter, a statement of substance of the ordinance will be published as required by law and finally passed to be determined. And if you noticed, as I read that, line 33, the word deemed should have been enacted and ordained.
Do we need to amend that?
I think so, because my understanding of the word deemed is that would not be the appropriate word to use, so yes.
All right. Can we have a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Mitchell. Mr. Ierton, second. All right, we'll vote on the amendment, changing the word deemed. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, to enacted and ordained.
Enacted. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Any questions on the ordinance? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2401 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Does, we have any public comments?
No, Mr. President.
Again, the only thing I'd like to say is, Godspeed, Laura. We wish you well. With that, meeting is adjourned.
That's a good idea.